I now call to order the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting time being six-thirty P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon. Here. Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Ma- excuse me, trustee Daly.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. All right. Now it's time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak, please approach this podium. Say your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak on non-agenda items. Okay, no public comment. Next, we'll have a presentation, a discussion of facilitation by Ms. Stephanie Anderson, our human resources director on conducting performance reviews. Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Going to have Ethan pull up my slides for me. So I'm here tonight. I'm looking for some feedback and direction from the board regarding the performance evaluation for the town administrator and for the town attorney. All right, next slide, please. All right, so the two items of feedback that I'm looking for from you is who will conduct the performance review, whether it will be in-house or if we will bring in a third-party contractor. And then the second piece is what is your preferred format of the evaluation, whether it's a standard format or if we want to do a three-sixty evaluation, which would be conducted by a third party. Next slide. All right, so many of you have already been through this process before, but I wanted to give a little bit of background. So part of town code, it's section two-thirty-twenty, requires that the town administrator's performance be evaluated at least once per year. So we've been running this evaluation in-house for the last few years, and how it has worked is that each board member receives just a standard evaluation template. They have different performance areas, and then under each one of those areas, there are specific questions to the town administrator's performance. The board will put together their answers, then I will compile everything together, and then I present it in executive session. So we go through the different areas, and there's just discussion about performance throughout the year. And then the board will also make some considerations and talk about if any changes are recommended for the town administrator and town attorney's contract as well. So these reviews are done for just the town administrator and the town attorney only. They're the only two roles with the town that are actually under a contract. The rest of staff, they just fall under regular administrative reviews. Next slide, please. All right, so I wanted just to give a little bit of background of the pros and cons for running an evaluation in-house or having a third-party contractor run the evaluations. So I've done it before. I've done it for three years, and some of the pros are it's more cost-effective. It's just using my time. I'm working directly with all of you as well, so it's a little bit more flexible with that also. We can move the meeting times around. There's a lot more flexibility for you. There definitely, lots of other municipalities do contract this work out. Contractors, they're not influenced by any internal politics or internal relationships. They're knowledgeable in the review process. Lots of these H R firms, they have a lot of information around compensation. They have tools that they can help provide really, really, really great evaluations. But while they do come at a cost, it does help fully separate the contracted evaluations versus the staff evaluations. All right, and then next slide. So we'll kind of get into this based on your conversation, but there are definitely two different methods we could choose for these reviews. So standard performance review. Again, this is what we've done. It does help keep feedback more focused. We choose the areas that it talks about, and since we do generally keep the template the same year over year, we can compare it too. So that's something that is definitely a plus by the standard performance review. The three-sixty evaluation, what that does is it will also take feedback from the leadership team. So you would actually get to see anonymous results from leaders about how they believe the town administrator is performing. The three-sixty evaluation, if that is the route that the board chooses to go, we will have to contract that out through, through a third-party vendor. Running that internally would just leave a lot more areas of risk for bias from H R working with peers to gather and put together the information. So if we're going to go the route of the three-sixty evaluation, I would definitely recommend a third-party vendor. So I'm here for questions, and I thought this would be a good opportunity for you to discuss kind of how you want it to look.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate that. Couple of questions I've got. This is the first time that I've been part of this, and, but I've, I've done literally hundreds of evaluations on employees over the years. The template that you're using, that you've used in the past, does it follow the, the model from the I C M A about manager evaluations?
You know, I'm not certain if it follows the I C M A. The template that we've used, it's standard for some other municipalities. We reached out to gather what they use. So I haven't compared it to I C M A. I did bring the templates, just so people, so you all could see what it has looked like in the past. But it recently covered seven different performance areas, and then under each one of those, there are about five questions. So it talks about relationship with the board, relationship with the community. There are lots of different parts that are directly part of the town administrator's role.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if it followed that format from I C M A, and I would love to see a copy of the template before we burn things up, just so I have an idea of what we're agreeing to. Secondly, I've, I do like the idea of a three-sixty evaluation personally. The job that a manager does isn't necessarily just all board-facing. It's also about within the organization as well. And the opportunity to have feedback of the effectiveness of the management is something that we don't necessarily see as trustees. But how the organization is managed and how the administration is managed, the three-sixty is, is definitely, I think it's beneficial to have that. And I understand your point about any potential bias there. I don't really care whether it's in-house or third-party myself, but I do like the three-sixty format. And I would like to make sure that that evaluation form, you know, addresses the proper areas, and we're not missing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
I sent a lot of my questions previous to this, so thank you very much for answering those. After looking, and I actually was able to speak with a rep that does the three-sixty review. I went online to get what a sample would look like on a review platform. And of course, when you enter your number, you get the automatic callback. Are you interested in securing? I was like, no, but I have questions if you can answer them. I actually really like the tool. It is way more comprehensive than what our seven sections, not that it's not amazing for what it is, but it, it doesn't provide an amount of feedback that I feel we could possibly get when looking at the whole picture instead of just our single perspective. I would love to see, kind of, if we're doing a three-sixty, I would love to see possibly like a community feedback on how they feel management is interacting with them and items like that. If it's, we're looking at a full three-sixty evaluation, we also want to know what residents are experiencing when they call and have to speak with our town administrator or deal with our town attorney. I think that would be beneficial feedback because we always get like the standard emails or the messages that come through, the calls that come through. But to have that feedback, I think, would be greatly beneficial and offer the community a chance to be involved in how their town is going as well. I like the fact when I spoke with them that we can, as trustees, look at and set up revisions if we feel that there's additional areas that are needed or areas that are not needed. So I thought that was a kudos to this. The, the cost estimate is kind of pricey. Five to six thousand dollars for that software. But I don't know, so I've never heard of an I C M A model, so I would like to know kind of what that looks like because this is the first time I've heard of something like that. But yeah, no, so I'm in support of whatever the board generally agrees with this. I think the three-sixty will provide more information for us in the long run, but also be focused on areas that we do need to focus on, or areas that we're maybe putting too much effort and energy into that possibly don't need it. So, no, I think that, I think this is a decent idea.
May I provide a little bit of clarification?
Yes, please.
So running the three-sixty, I'm sure there are many tools out there for how to conduct a three-sixty evaluation. What I additionally, or originally started looking at, and I'm happy to look at other options, was actually going through a consulting firm. So it'd actually be, somebody from the firm would call each member to interview them and then compile the information. So it isn't a software, it'd be more of a, a professional fee that they would be actually running the evaluation. And I do think, I, I'll definitely ask about community feedback for it. The three-sixty evaluations, they're very complex because it's gathering from all different sides of performance for the single person. And as you are all the supervisor of the town administrator, that that's where the feedback from you and then hearing the perspective from the leadership team would help you run a more probably thorough performance review. But if there's direction, I could definitely also look into what programs there are to run the three-sixty evaluations. I just started poking around, and so the estimated dollars is based on a professional fee from a proposal or quote from them. Sorry, I couldn't think of the word.
Got it. So clarifying question off that. So then the only difference would be the form that you're sending us would be not a form. It would just be someone calling us.
So it'd be the form, so the standard evaluation plus the three-sixty, so plus the extra interviews. So it adds on an extra layer of evaluation. So it would still be the standard form. You would still see all of those pieces. But the extra interviews, the extra steps to gather more information for you is what the three-sixty would provide. Good question. And I'm sorry I wasn't clear with that.
Got it.
Thanks. Trustee Moyer.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd agree with trustee Cannon and trustee Teets. I think the three-sixty is a great idea. We don't see the day-to-day, and the more information we can have to make an educated recommendation, the better. If there's a standard template, I'd love to see that for the evaluation. I think that this type of process can add so much to the culture. Encourages self-awareness, and it shows that all voices matter and allows the employees to feel that their feelings and opinions also matter. And I think that the fee is worth having, I mean, worth paying if that means we have a clearer view of the performance of either individual. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand.
I agree with the previous comments here. I think the external perspective would be great. You know, when we're working day in and day out, we kind of miss a lot of stuff, so I think that would be a perfect way to really get a good overview of what's happening and, you know, their performance. So I think they're going to end up having pretty decent, but it, it would be good to have that outside person looking at it. You know, the, the objectivity of it, I mean, us, again, us being day in and day out, I don't know if we can be as objective, you know, especially with our personal relationships. So I think that just takes that off the table. And I love the three-sixty. I think we need the comprehensive feedback like that, and I think it's worth every penny. So I'll go with whatever way everybody goes here, but I think that's what I would prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly.
I've done many of your review processes, and it is extremely professional and very well-done. Data is compiled amazingly, and it's very thought-provoking and actionable. So I do want to say that first. And so I think that's great, and I think there's a significant value in using similar scoring mechanisms because we have a baseline. We have historical scores and information on similar questions. So if we can improve those questions or make them more, make them more applicable or maybe remove some that aren't so applicable, I, I'd totally be open to considering what questions. What I would love, though, is that we keep the essence of it, and so we can compare historical scores. So that's the only thing I would say there. But the fact that that could be utilized in conjunction with the three-sixty review makes me very excited. You know, organizations where their purpose and mission is to improve organizations through reviews, bring amazing insight and external insight from tons of other organizations, I think we could benefit from that. I also see, think that seeing the whole, not just comprehensive from our view, but comprehensive from the entire organization is always beneficial and will provide even more actionable insights and goals. We've had a lot of goals come out of previous reviews that I've seen changes and improvements based on our specific feedbacks and wants and needs. So I think that that would be over even more with that kind of scenario. So I definitely support the three-sixty evaluation. I might suggest that in considering that and the cost, maybe that be considered every so many years rather than every single year, just to keep costs down and kind of as an expectation. But I, I, I think that's a great idea. But again, I'm happy with everything as it has been. I think this is a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I, I might be the odd one out here, and while certainly I'm not opposed to a three-sixty review process, I think that, you know, in order to keep costs down, I would prefer that we stick with the standard review process. If, as trustee Cannon pointed out, if we'd like to look at the I C M A or some other organization as far as questions, maybe we could include with our current reviews. I certainly don't think that would be out of line. It would be at a minimal cost, I think, to us. So personally, I would prefer that we stick with the standard evaluations. I do think, you know, it is important that our resident feedback, as far as our administrative staff, is important. It's also kind of our job to build those into those performance reviews, right? Because we are, the board is ultimately responsible for those contracts between the town administrator and the town attorney. So personally, I, I believe that that very much belongs in our wheelhouse, but I would not be opposed to doing a three-sixty if that's what the rest of the board wants to do.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think a three-sixty would be great. I imagine it's kind of awkward running a performance review on town administrator and the town attorney when you work in the same building. Could make things difficult. And so having an outside person coming and looking in and then being able to talk to everybody on leadership and get feedback from more than just the board, so we have the, the full picture, I think, is huge. You know, cost is always a thing, but we also have to invest where it's important. I think this is an important place to invest that money to make sure that we're performing well, that the town administrator and town attorney are doing their jobs to the utmost standard because that's, you know, what we expect. So, yeah, I'm on board for the three-sixty. Direction-wise. So board direction, good? There's, there's mud? Cool.
So I'll grab, I'll put together some quotes. I'll go out, get a couple. I'll look into some other options as well to bring back to the boards before we make a decision.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And then the format, the, can you send us a copy of the I C M A to kind of see what that platform looks like?
I don't believe that, that.
I don't know. Is that be tied into the three-sixty?
I've got a personal copy of it in my files, and I was just on the site, and I, you have to dig to find that. So I didn't have time to dig into that, but I'll look for my personal copy. But I, I don't know if I want to forward that to everybody right around, unless you'd like a copy of that. I'd have to scan it and then send electronically, but, but I'll, I'll see if I can find that. If I can't find it at my house, I'll send an email saying it's lost.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the titles for the items on the consent agenda?
D-one, July nine, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. D-two, resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution making appointments to the Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails Board and the Wellington Housing Authority.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Wow.
Close race.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pretend Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you, sir. Will you please read the title for item E-one?
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-four, approving a consultant agreement for professional services for affordable housing needs assessment and strategy development.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cody Bird, the planning director, will present on this item. Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the introduction. A pleasure to be here this evening. As the title states, I'm seeking approval from the board for consultant agreement for professional services to undertake the affordable housing needs assessment and strategy development. Quite a mouthful, but in its essence, it's pretty simple. We know that housing costs continue to go up in the front range. We know that Wellington housing costs have gone up as well. Interest rates have changed, material costs go up. Everything is changing, and the one thing it's not is the ability to afford a residence either ownership or rental in our community. We know there's a big gap, but we don't understand it really well in terms of how to close the gap. What we'd like to do is undertake a study to help inform what the market conditions look like, what the trends are, what the housing needs are, to identify the gaps and the increments, and then solutions for how to help fill those to make housing costs for our residents more affordable. To do that, we'd like to engage with the consultant to assist with that. The town did apply for and obtain grant funding through DOLA, federal funds through federal relief to secure grant funding to supplement this. And we solicited an R F P request for proposals. We were fortunate to have five different firms or groups respond to that proposal. Three of them were really good, and really two of them were kind of our top contenders. So we had to pick one. I feel really confident in the proposal that was submitted by Matrix Design Group, Inc. We had an internal staff selection committee that used an evaluation criteria defined in the R F P and in your staff report to score those objectively. And Matrix Design's proposal really came to the top of that list. The town budgeted seventy thousand dollars in our twenty-twenty-four budget to undertake this project. As I mentioned, we had grant funds through DOLA for up to fifty-two and some change, fifty-two thousand and some change. And so we only are responsible for twenty-five percent of that. So the total out-of-pocket cost to the town is, is thirteen thousand dollars and some change. Definitely a, a cost win for, for the consultant group that we're potentially going to get to partake in this. The scope of service in that contract agreement has a, a very detailed analysis of how we're going to perform public engagement, the number of meetings that they're including in this price. And staff thought that was really representative of the process needed to undertake this study and, and get these analyses ready for informing how to make decisions around affordable housing moving forward. So I'd be really excited if the board could support this. We do recommend approval of the resolution and the contract with Matrix Design Group, Inc. for affordable housing study. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
I'm very excited to see this moving forward. So this has been one of, I think, all of our asks for an extended period of time, and I'm excited to see that it's coming to fruition. Kudos to you on securing the grant funding. Twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars is a lot easier to stomach than seventy thousand dollars. So I'm very grateful for you guys working on acquiring that grant. So the only thing that I had as far as a question went here is will this include suggestions on the addressing water rates on housing developments that have little to no grass, that are not going to be using a large amount of potable water in irrigation systems? And will that include suggestions on the affordability side of utility rate recommendations? I, it says utility rate recommendations, but it, it doesn't really go into detail of what that includes.
Sure. So I, I appreciate the question. I think it's a good one because we know in terms of housing affordability, it's more than just the home price. Utility costs, one-time fees, energy, electric, gas, all of those things add up to the total cost of living and therefore affordability. I would say that we're going to take a look at some information regarding development fees, impact fees, water tap costs, things of that nature. But I also want to be cognizant that the town's enterprise fund has to operate based on its fee structure and support itself. And so it would not be the, the primary goal of this study to use affordable housing as a metric to bring down costs of water. Water has to charge what it has to charge, but we do want to understand the impact that it has on housing affordability to help inform other decision-making that could be used to help bring the cost of housing down. We definitely want to understand the impact. I don't know that, that this study would necessarily inform changes to rate structure or fees around water.
Got it. Perfect. And my side was more looking at the development side of thing on required, the water requirements to those certain developments. So if they don't have a lot of landscaping, they don't have a lot of grass, items like that, does that decrease the, the need for a developer to bring so much water per that affordable housing unit? So that was more along the lines of my question.
Yeah, great. I appreciate the, the clarification. We'll definitely want to take a look at that, and that's kind of a nuanced concern, too, in terms of the, the water costs for a, a landscape, but do the landscape costs go up to install a different type of landscape than SOD is generally pretty cheap to install and expensive to maintain? So we want to understand all of those implications and find the right kind of balancing point for Wellington.
Got it. Would the, this help with that side of things, or this is not so much going to cover that?
I, I'll see how it fits in. I, I, I'm not sure I can commit to it today. I know that this consultant group has done a lot of these studies in Colorado with very specific and good experience on the housing markets. I'll ask them to, to consider how the landscaping costs and irrigation costs factor into their overall evaluation. We'll definitely take a look at it. I'm not sure exactly how much of an impact it would make on the big picture.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cannon.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Bird, for doing that. This is an easy decision for me. The board deliberated this as a priority. And over a period of four months last year, put it in the budget. Budgeted funds to do the complete survey itself. You reached out and obtained DOLA grant funds to do this, bringing our costs down. This, this is an easy solution. Yeah, it works, and I agree with your. I didn't see the other proposals there, but I do trust that the evaluation process to choose Matrix Design was good. I've done a lot of affordable housing over the years, you know, and, and to trustee Teets, understanding that needs assessment, the type of housing, the size of the housing and so forth is, is, is kind of like the first step. But I've also worked with communities who have decided because it's, it's a municipal priority that they deliberated on if it's classified as affordable housing, that certain fees would be waived, but that's a board decision that, that has to do that. And you have to evaluate that based on, you know, are you putting your, your fund in danger or anything? But I, I wouldn't expect that this matrix design would be looking at a fee structure for us. And we've had utility studies and, and fee studies and so forth like that. It's really more going to be about if, if we as a board want to find a way to, to lower those prices, you have to find different solutions, and fees are only one of the solutions that you can choose from. But, but thank you for the presentation. Thank you for going out and receiving this, this grant. And I'm happy to see Wellington moving forward with a, on, to pursue an issue and look into an issue that's affecting all of Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bird, and certainly, you know, thank you to the supporting staff that helped to get this grant pushed through. I'm certainly excited to, you know, have this approved tonight. I, I think obviously this is a very important thing for us, and as the price of housing just continues to increase, increase in northern Colorado, obviously, folks that, you know, are of lower incomes and that sort of thing are going to need housing at some point in time. So I think this will be a very good tool for us to be able to leverage as far as when developments are approved in the future. It'll give us something, I think, as far as leverage to say, hey, maybe we can make. Uh, it'll give us something, I think, as far as leverage to say, hey, maybe we can make a deal as, as far as a lot sizing or these types of things go. Um, so really, uh, appreciate staff's work on this and happy to get this going tonight, so.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Moore.
Oh, boy. Um, I'm so excited about this. I can't even tell you. I stayed home so I wouldn't have to subject you to my happy dance. Um, I'm just thrilled uh, at the opportunities and the improvements um, to quality of life that this can provide for our residents. When you see that forty percent of our community is cost burden and paying more than thirty percent for their homes or their stability, um, that's heartbreaking. The stability that a home can provide increases all qualities of life. It allows you to buy groceries. It allows you to afford healthcare. Um, you are more likely to graduate from college if you grow up in a stable home. Um, this will change everything. And so thank you, Cody and team for going after this grant and making this happen. Thank you to our friends at Dola who continue to prioritize finding ways to make Colorado more affordable. And I would go even further to say we are acknowledging here is a national housing crisis and it affects every aspect of life. Um, this is a steal for what we're gonna see in terms of results. And I'm just so happy. Um, I'm especially excited to see the adoption of possible strategies to help encourage the development of affordable housing. I'm just beyond excited for all of it. And it's a great proposal and I cannot wait to either be a part of the process or watch it unfold.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand.
Probably can't add too much more to it than it's already been said. Appreciate what you guys have done. I think it's extremely important. And I am glad to see that uh, the few different things that you guys are looking within this grant are gonna be looked at. The utility rates, I think, is huge. I mean, right now you gotta look at, you know, water rates out here making it almost unaffordable for people that are retired and such. So, you know, taking everything in consideration, maybe that's gonna give us a little extra uh, viewpoint or insight on what we can do as a town on that. So I think there's a lot of value to this and appreciate you guys going out there and accomplishing this. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Trustee Daly.
I could not agree anymore with uh, the comments from trustee Moyer regarding quality of life and, you know, our, our duty to do everything in our power to, to improve the lives of residents of Wellington. Um, above and beyond that, uh, within a needs assessment, of course, we're gonna find out our holes and wants and, you know, needs. Um, but beyond that, I think the connection I want to make is it's one thing to know what you need and want. It's another thing to understand how to codify those strategies, um, code, um, processes, procedures, moving forward to support that method going forward. So there's no question risk of pursuing that without support from the whole organization of the town of Wellington. So I think that this is an amazing initiative and I'm really looking forward to us leaving a legacy and setting and stamping like the, everything associated with Wellington, associated with code and process to make sure that we're supporting this from now into forever. So I think this is a big deal. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Bird, you and the staff got the grant funding. Way to go. Um, I don't have anything more to say than what's already been said. Don't need to repeat it. So you guys are doing great. Um, any comments on public from this item? No. Any further comments from the board? No. All right. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two-four, resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, Colorado approving a consultant agreement with Matrix Design Group Incorporated for a housing needs assessment and affordable housing strategy development.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion uh, carries unanimously and the resolution is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, on to reports. Any reports from the deputy town administrator?
No report.
Thank you. Um, staff communications have been included in the packet. Are there any questions from the board on these items?
I do have one question and it's related to the water usage report for June.
Perfect.
Um, my-
Then one moment to get to the podium.
Knew it was coming. Um, okay, so my question is, is I was looking at total water production and it looks like June, we matched COVID for the numbers. Is that correct or is that a, a data error?
Not quite. So I, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, almost forgot my title.
You're fine.
Um, so what I'm looking at on page one nineteen of one twenty-five of the packet shows total monthly pr- production of forty-eight million gallons in June of twenty-two-four and in COVID, we saw fifty-five million gallons.
Okay, so twenty-twenty-one as well, though? So we're matching twenty-twenty-one's number for-
Right, yeah, we were, we were back to what is more average this year than what we saw last year.
Got it.
Yep.
My only question?
Thank you.
Perfect. And then, uh, we'll have Sergeant Sherry present on the LC SO report.
Good evening, board. Um, I don't know if I have anything to add regarding the uh, monthly report unless you have any questions in that regard. Um, I did want to come up and just kind of uh, make sure that y'all understood kind of where I'm at and who's kind of taken over for me to some extent. We've had some movement at the sheriff's office and the sheriff uh, himself has elected to move me into what's called an interim lieutenant position. Um, maybe a little bit more pay. I don't know, something like that, but uh, which is always good. Um, but it doesn't mean that I'm not gonna be here in Wellington. I'm just gonna be overseeing uh, what Lieutenant Josh Fast used to do. Wellington Berthardt in Estes Park. So I'm gonna be kind of moving around a little bit, a few more assigned duties. Um, Jamie, would you uh, come up real quick?
Uh, put her on the spot.
Yeah, I know. Uh, the much smarter version uh, of me um, is Jamie Smith. Um, she is coming into this as my corporal, but she is gonna be the acting sergeant for the Town of Wellington. Um, she's been here for about a year, uh, or I'm sorry, about six months now. Uh, she's just been taking care of all the other uh, duties that I don't really like to do. Um, taking and taking care of our deputies and whatnot, but she's gonna be here for a lot of the meetings. So you'll see her around a lot more. And you're gonna see a lot of the, you know, weekly reports or periodic, periodic reports coming out. So um, you'll see and hear from her a little bit more. Any questions?
Welcome. Congratulations. I'm gonna stop giving you kudos and compliments so we don't lose an additional, um, I know, I was like, meh, I am very happy for you and I think it's well-earned. So, and I think that anyone who's working under you will probably achieve the same success that we have seen with you being part of our area here in Wellington. And I know that you reside in this area, so we'll eventually still see you palling around somewhere. Um, but no, congratulations and welcome.
Uh, and last thing, uh, we're gonna try to do that presentation for you. I know we bounced some dates around for you. I'm just trying to get as many people as I can. Um, I know and I, I know that the mayor and I talked about May, or I'm sorry, August tenth being the date, but actually it's August seventeenth.
Oh, yeah, I won't be here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir.
I think I responded to that email.
Um, I'm just, I'm just trying to get as many uh, from the board there as possible. And I, of course, I'm trying to coordinate this with the Town of Berthardt so, for their staff as well. Um, I think we can, we're gonna put on a pretty, pretty darn good presentation for you. As I said, we just want to try to get as many of y'all as you can, so. Uh, we're looking at eight-thirty AM to about three PM. We'll, we will provide lunch.
Last year we went, it was incredible, well worth it. Trustee Mason, or Mayor Pretten Mason, love to see you there. I won't be there, though. Okay.
Congratulations. And I apologize for the tenth because several of us are doing a Boys and Girls Club fundraiser that day, so, but I can't wait. It was so much fun last time. I learned so much. So super valuable time. Thank you.
Uh, congratulations to both of you on the promotions, how, however temporary or otherwise may be. Congratulations on that. I, I did just have one real quick question as far as the uh, mailbox incidents. What call type were those classified as?
Uh, that's probably gonna be a criminal mischief. I think we'll go into that. Uh, criminal mischief. Um, we know that mail was stolen, but we could only classify it as to what we knew at the time. So that would be a criminal mischief.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate you guys. What you do here is phenomenal and I love the friendships we've, we've developed over. So I love how you guys interact with the community and uh, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. All right, board reports. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I am excited to announce a series of events presented and hosted by Safe Routes to School Wellington. On July twenty-fifth at Main Street Market, we will be hosting a free bike clinic. Bring your bikes and have them repaired by members of the community, which include your planning director, who is super passionate about biking. Um, we'll also be hosting another one on August eighth, if you want to get those ready for school, also at the Main Street Market. And then on August fourteenth, we will have a ribbon cutting of our safe routes, which will be temporarily painted on the sidewalks of Wellington. And that will be at I Stone South, followed by a community barbecue bash at Centennial Park, which we now have about ten community partners that are participating in that. Kiwanis is sponsoring free food for everyone that comes. We have uh, the Legion helping with various things, the bike clinic, grilling hot dogs, et cetera. And we'll have free backpacks full of school supplies for the kids, also sponsored by Kiwanis. Um, and another community partner, face painting, balloon animals, games by Park and Parks and Rec, and so many more surprises to come. Uh, this is really an example of what good can happen when a community comes together to support our youth. So please do not hesitate, come out, celebrate with us, Safe Routes to School Wellington. You should see posters around town soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz.
Is that, so what time as far as July twenty-fifth, trustee Moyer?
Um, July twenty-fifth, we'll be there the whole time the market's there, so four-thirty to seven-thirty.
Perfect.
And same with the eighth.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so the only really board report I have is more of an ask or suggestion for our board. Um, and responding to, I'm sure that everybody has had just as much re- reach out with water rates and this billing that has happened this, the received in June. Um, what I would love to do and I would love to get our trustees behind is a town hall all related to water. So this is an introduction of where we started, going back with the contract signing in nineteen eighty-one, where we are now and where we are possibly headed into the future with what we're looking at related to water. Um, that's maybe having the tables set up and if people have questions on even identifying, I've had one resident reach out to me and say, hey, where do I find my meter? So, and I guess I didn't realize that it, it could be a valid question. Um, how do you read your meter? Where do you reach out to if you have questions? Just pretty much a town hall supporting the irrigation audits, having someone maybe schedule at that event where people can come and sign up for irrigation audits. Just something that works on the education aspect. I think where some of this frustration comes from is we have new residents that are feeding into town and we also have residents that possibly don't have a lot of information related to the water, related to how much we would love to be able to control what our water costs, but unfortunately we are monitored and limited by what we get billed as a community. Um, I'd also like to look at addressing hard stop dates for smart meters and learning more about why that might not be a good idea or why you know, it's a recommendation that we not have the hearts, hard stop dates for reading meters. But this, I think, is something that welcoming the community out and understanding and having a presentation and then an engagement with the water department and education might benefit the community right now and possibly alleviate some additional frustrations that have stemmed out of not so much maybe feeling that they're being taken advantage of, but the not, the knowledge of what's going on. So then they don't know what's going on. So if there's something we could look at about a town hall where it's a, an education solely focused on water, that would be amazing if we could do that.
What would s- what would something that take man-hours, time-wise, cost-wise?
I think we have a, we have a lot to consider and I'd like to hear what the board um, thoughts on the conversation. I think that was the ask of trustee Teetz.
Yeah.
Um, I also do know that in the future, we are working on the water source development plan. Um, and so I'm, I'm just, having not prepared for this on the fly, I do think that that might pair well with that effort. And I think that there was something, um, you know, through the fall, we're gonna be working on that. So um, it might be best placed in that effort that is already underway, would be my initial gut reaction to something like that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Cannon.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, uh, thank you trustee Teetz for bringing that up. Uh, one of the things that I feel that the board needs to do uh, is some kind of joint statement that says, says, folks, we understand you're struggling with your water. You know, a little bit of education piece on that, but maybe a series of statements. I mean, some of the, some of what I'm seeing on on social media is, you know, that, that, you know, the trustees are silent about what's going on. And uh, you know, no one's, no one's saying anything, no one's communicating anything. And, you know, we, we've discussed the problem before, the nineteen eighty-three contract that we're locked into, that, that has variables in there which are driving your cost up through the roof because of the interest rates and and there's not a whole lot we can do about it, although there was some relief shown last year uh, uh, by the board by transferring some funds, I believe, by the general fund to, to help offset some of those costs. This is a lot drier year and hotter year than last summer was too, as well. Um, but, you know, we should have been expecting this in the summer. We should have been ahead of this. We should have been, you know, if, if, if you're on Let's Talk Wellington or Wellington Communications or whatever, you know, there should be regular communications about, about this that, that comes out. Just think of like, like you own a store and you're marketing, you, you push these notifications out, we educate people and, and answer their questions. You know, I've, I've looked at the social medias and I've wanted to chime in myself, but I've just kind of held back because I don't want to speak for the board. That's why I think a, you know, a, a joint discussion about what does that look like? Maybe we can have some samples provided by staff. Uh, and uh, so that we can, we can just kind of tell the community, hey, we hear you. We care about this. You know, we're doing everything we can and I understand we're in negotiations and so forth, trying to get those costs to down. Uh, that's gonna be an ongoing thing for a long time. It's not gonna provide any relief this summer. So is, I think as long as the community is aware that, that we know about this and they're working on this and we're trying to find solutions for that through the alternative water source, uh, you know, uh, to negotiate a contract or whatever. I think we just need to get that word out and let people know that we're not just sitting here mute. You know, we, we care and, and we, we're, we're trying to do something about it. Uh, the second thing I had was, um, I just wanted to uh, say um, thank you to everyone who participated, the trustees and staff who participated with our strategic planning over the past two weeks. Um, it was very uh, uh, heartwarming for me to see uh, all of us working together with that common good of, of, of putting Wellington first and, and finding ways that we can, that we can provide for the needs of the community. Um, I appreciate the consultants that we had, the Ottawa Group. Um, I thought they did a wonderful job and I look forward to our follow-up uh, discussion. I think it's gonna be in September or October. Um, so be on the lookout for that as, as well. So be on the lookout for that as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Bird.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Certainly, I concur with some of my friends down here as far as, you know, water education for the public. I, obviously, we've all seen the comments, and certainly, I don't think anybody is trying to avoid this issue in any way. Certainly, I talk about it every single day. I do wanna just, just a few maybe quick misconceptions about things. I see a lot of comments about meters, numbers being estimated and that sort of thing. I wanna be very clear, folks, if it does not say on your bill that this is an estimate, it is not an estimate. So I wanna be clear about that. One other thing to consider here is that of water users in Wellington, the fourth tier is anything that's above twenty thousand gallons. We know that there are nine percent of tap users that use over twenty thousand gallons a month in Wellington. So while I certainly sympathize with the folks that are getting these dramatic bills, I think irrigation numbers and these, you know, if you're running your sprinkler system for an extra ten, fifteen minutes a day, this, this stuff can add up significantly. And certainly, I don't wanna say, you know, oh, it's, certainly, there can't be any discrepancy or anything like that. I never discount these types of things. But I would suggest that our meters are very accurate. They're industry-standard meters. These, these are, you know, if, if, if there was some mass issue with that, we would have pinpointed that by now. But I have not seen any issues with malfeasance as far as any of that goes. I've not seen any meters that have come back miscalibrated or anything like that up to this point. So I would certainly encourage folks that have questions about their billing to reach out to the municipal service building. You can certainly reach out to me. I'm happy to look into that for you as well. But, you know, like I said, I do sympathize in that regard. I do not have the opioid abatement council until Thursday, so other than that, I have no report.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly?
Just as a comment to that, my heart goes out to everyone, and this has been a ruthless summer when it comes to weather, and it's very unfortunate. I do want to let people know that this board has, within our budget, approved hardship utility grants. We call them HUG grants. If indeed you are going through a hardship and you are having a hard time paying your Wellington utilities, I recommend that you either go to the municipal services building to inquire, or on our website, there is options to seek assistance for paying your utility bills. So these are indeed related to hardships, medical, you know, unexpected medical bills, car breaking down. There's a variety of things that might qualify, and they would need some kind of proof. But it's important that everyone is aware of that because I know these are extremely hard times. The weather is doing everything that it can to make it even harder in an already difficult situation. So please consider the hardship utility grants a hug from our board if that might help. Other than that, good news that I have, and maybe something that's more exciting, is it is summertime in Wellington, which is my favorite season of Wellington. I wanted to let people know that you should start making your habits around some of the events that are going on downtown because it's my favorite part of this entire town. On Thursdays, every Thursday through the remainder of the summer, is the Main Street Market by the Wellington Main Streets program, a variety of vendors, food trucks, activities, opportunities with Safe Routes, and then other people who host the other weeks. If you are just looking for a place to go to dinner on Thursday nights, this is a great opportunity for you and then be community and be together. So it's wonderful. Another opportunity is the mingle on Mainz, which is the third Friday of every month. All the businesses downtown are extra open with activities and fun, and it's a great thing to just be in that habit of coming downtown on Fridays. It's beautiful and fun. And again, you get to see everybody you know and love. Another opportunity to support our community is the cereal box community concert that's supporting the Community Services Center, a big initiative in town to provide more services to our community that's being undertaken by the nonprofit Grace Village. They are having a community concert on August fifteenth where you can bring a box of cereal and other opportunities to support this project and fundraising. So if you have any questions about that or want me to direct you in the right way, let me know. But otherwise, summertime in Wellington is lovely, so I hope that everybody gets to participate. Thanks.
Trustee Wiegand?
Do not have a board report, but I do wanna address the water real quick. We definitely feel your pain out there. And, you know, I was amazed. I went back through the last three, four years of water usage at my own place. And I looked at the weather comparisons during that time, too. And I was pretty amazed, you know, I thought when I got my usage this last time for twenty-five thousand gallons of water, I said, oh, my God, there's no way. But I went back to, let's see, twenty-two, I had thirty thousand gallons. Twenty-one, I had twenty-three thousand gallons in that same month. So, and went through the next couple of months, too, and pretty much just about the same. So people be ready for the bills for the next couple of months. I know, I think the new rate structure, the tiers, started actually in two thousand twenty-three. Is that correct? It did not hit twenty-two, so this is really the first year that we're really hitting the impact of it. So, you know, we feel the pain. I feel the pain personally. And, you know, we'll do anything and everything we can to try to help. So, you know, we're, we hear you. Thank you.
So can I still get clarification on having something like a town hall for education? I think we kind of?
Yeah, so I think we're gonna tie it into what they're currently working on and go that route. That's, that's my thoughts. Board?
Any, yeah, any opportunity for more communication and education is wonderful, so I look forward to seeing how that plays out.
The only thing I would, I would further add, and I appreciate that, I think a town hall would be very good, but organizing one, getting that out there, not gonna be as quick as just a statement where we're just sending out information and so forth, you know. I mean, Trustee Wiegand, I appreciate you looking back through your, through your years, and as you were telling me that you're using comparable levels of water, the only variable is that interest rate in that eighty-three contract, which is, which has tripled the cost of water. So, you know, we're all using the, pretty much the same amount of water, more than last year. But last year was an outlier because of how wet it was, but because of that contract. And the town is actively working on renegotiating that contract to get costs under control. So that's, that's what's killing everybody, cost-wise.
Thank you, sir. Yep. I don't have anything to add on top of what was said. Yeah, if you, if, I mean, if you cut down your cycles by five minutes for each section, you do save a lot of money. So keep that in mind. I mean, we're all paying those, those bills. So, yeah, we're working on it. We're doing everything we can. We've adjusted the tier, so the town could be making money in that enterprise because it needs to make its own money. It was losing money from previous years. And we're making steps in the right direction. It's just a little painful right now. We're in those growing pains. And we will get through it. It's not gonna be quick, but we're doing it as quickly as we possibly can for you guys. That's all I have to say about that. Okay. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I now adjourn. July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting, time being seven-twenty-nine PM.